Welcome you to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Thursday, June 13th. Our agenda this evening will be to approve some minutes. We have a number of reserve fund transfers as we get to the end of the year. And we'll discuss those in detail. The most important issue for the evening is the appoint, the interview of two candidates for the opening of a patrolman position in our police department. And tonight we'll just conduct the interview and the selection process will be made probably by next week. And then we'll have selectmen and town administrator reports. And executive session for the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to potential litigation because discussion in an open session may be detrimental to the negotiating position of the town. We do not plan to return to the meeting after that executive session. So with that, we have received minutes for the May 23rd meeting, which was our last meeting. And I understand Mr. Healy had some corrections, which I got a chance to see, and I think Ms. Louder did as well. So I'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. The reserve fund transfer, just for the folks at home to remind them, as you know, a town meeting votes a set amount for salaries and expenses in the budgeting process under Article Six at town meeting, and we did that for this year, last year. We are now coming to the end of our fiscal year, which is June 30th, and we have until July 15th to close the books. So there are a number of reconciliations that have to be made based on various events that were either unanticipated or expenses that were not fully appreciated. And then in addition, there are transfers within the departments for moving items from salary to expense. So our town administrator will walk us through those issues. And over the next few minutes, we'll discuss the various issues on reserve fund transfers. So if you are ready, Mr. Alexiotis.
I am. I'll just give you a brief overview. The transfers you're going to be discussing tonight, 103,000, 955,000 of transfers from the reserve fund. The reserve fund has a balance of $372,000. And we'll be making intra-department transfers of 196,000, mostly from group health insurance into other budgets. And we have a surplus in group health insurance of about $250,000. So we'll be leaving pretty healthy surpluses both in both categories when we're done, which is reflective of the good year that we're having in terms of managing our expenses. And our revenues, of course, doing very well too, as I indicated to you in the past. We're just going to go through the list in order.
Yes, I think that's fine. And if I could ask my colleagues if they have a question, we'll put a hold on the issue.
Well, I was going to bring each of the department heads up here to talk about these because I think some of them are large and they're here for that discussion. So I'd ask that the fire chief come up, the deputy chief, and go over the two fire transfers that they have. Actually, they have a transfer and a allocation from expenses.
Welcome the fire chief.
Thank you.
Steve Duff and his sidekick, Bob Olson. Thank you.
Are we ready to get right into it?
I'm sitting here, my seatbelts are on.
I think we should cover both requests under the same discussion, if it's okay. We're asking for a reserve fund transfer of $75,000. And we're asking for an intra-department transfer from expenses over to salaries of $20,000. Several things have come up late in the year that have required this. I've had two people, the first week of June, go out on long-term injuries. Neither one is expected to be back at least before mid-July and possibly longer, maybe as late as September on one of them. And the other reason for the request is that we average about 10 long-term sick or injury leaves, people that take 10 or more days because of, and I don't want to get into the specifics of the medical issues with the individuals, but people that may have a broken leg or a rotavirus injury or whatever. And that average is what? What's the average on that, Bobby?
There are about six of them a year, about 70 days.
And this particular year, the number of days that were required for those people to rehab and return to work was almost double. It went up 70 percent. And that was something we definitely could not anticipate. Tropical Storm Sandy, the winter storm in February, stressed our overtime budget extremely. And that's why we're here today, to ask for this transfer to go, basically to cover overtime to get us through the end of the year. And I'm extremely concerned that even this may not do it, but we'll manage somehow.
I'm recommending this transfer along with all the others in your list. And with respect to the fire department, I just wanted to give you some perspective. In the last three years, fiscal 12, 11, and 10, respectively, fire departments returned $324,000 of salary and expenses, $43,000 the year before, and $165,000 the year before. These two guys managed their budget exceedingly well. So coming to the table, I know it's a large amount, but I do believe it's beyond their control.
Okay.
And I do apologize for the, again, for doing this late in the year, but unfortunately that was beyond our control. We look at our budget every week. The deputy looks at the salaries. I look at the expenses. We look at it every single week. And we generally make the adjustments in February or March if we see things falling behind. And sometimes we have to say no more than we'd like to. But this year, we just couldn't do it because of the lateness of the winter, the lateness of the injuries, and the extent of the injury.
Can I just, are there any reimbursable expenses as a result of the storms?
Yes, there will be some where, we had a kickoff meeting yesterday, I believe, with regards to tropical storm, with regards to the winter storm in February. They did not allow, this is unfortunate news for the community, the Federal Emergency Management Agency did not allow for snow removal expenses in the February storm for Plumbeth County. 14 counties in the state were declared, 10, but only 10 were allowed snow removal. We missed it by a half an inch. But we are allowed debris removal and emergency measures. So the overtime that was expended for the winter storm, I think for us, was about $9,000. We should get 75 percent of that back.
We did go through the appeal process with FEMA, and we were rejected in the appeal. Plumbeth County was rejected in the appeal process. The money that we receive back from this will likely come after the fiscal year. If it came during the fiscal year, we could credit to their budget and allow them the flexibility to spend that. Once it comes in after the fiscal year, it drops to the bottom line in general.
There's an article in the ledger yesterday talking about, "We missed everything by a half an inch."
And what you mean is a half an inch of snow totals.
Right. It's like, we should have given the measuring stick to somebody else.
Any other questions?
No, these are fine.
Okay, Paul?
Nothing.
Do you want to do a motion as we do these?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
All right. Want me to do fire? Betty has helped me.
Sure, go ahead. Go right ahead.
I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval of fire department transfer request dated June 3rd, 2013, in the amount of $75,000 from the reserve fund to the fire department salaries.
Have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to recommend transfer from the fire department expense account to the fire department salaries account in the amount of $20,000.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, our next one is the harbor master's department, and I'd ask the chief and the harbor master to come on up.
This is our chief, Mike Perrino, and the harbor master, Ken Corson. Welcome.
Evening.
Good evening.
Hey, I'm requesting an interdepartment transfer request for $7,000, and that would be from the police salary account to the harbor master salary account. And that's due to a personnel issue we've had going on for a few months. And because of the need for the assistant harbor masters to get more hours to do the job and get the harbor ready for the summer, we've incurred this expense.
And I think if I'm correct, chief, the total expense that we actually incurred as a loss due to employee not being here was about $12,000. The harbor masters backfilled a lot of those hours, but couldn't backfill all of them. So we had to use as additional staff.
Okay. Mr. Healy, any questions?
None.
Good.
I'm okay. Paul, do you want to make the motion? Do you have a
I'd like to just sit through a couple of those.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, Irma, if you wouldn't
I can read these. These are good, not like the tongue twister I had that one night. I can do this one.
These are all in English.
Yes, thank you. I make a motion to recommend approval of police department interdepartment transfer request dated June 10th, 2013, in the amount of $7,000 from police wages account to harbor master salary account.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next one, I'm going to ask the chief to take us through, is the animal control officer.
Okay, I'm requesting two interdepartment transfer requests. The first one would be for $3,341, and that would be from the animal control expense account into the animal control salary account. The second would be a $1,000 interdepartment request from the police department wage account into the animal control salary account. And this is due to the shortfall created by, as the board recalls, we had a mutual aid agreement with the county health. And they, what they did is they hired their own animal control officer, so therefore leaving us short. The number is greater than this, but what we've done is we've worked with the Bear Cove Park Committee, and they requested, they asked me if I could have Leslie do 10 hours a week in the park. And so they're compensating us for that. So that's why the transfers are not so high.
That's great.
I can do this one. Okay. That's great. Well, thank you. And just for the public at home, this was an arrangement that we had initially as we started the year, but conditions changed through the course of the year such that Mike had to adjust his management to get the cover list. So thank you for that effort. Mr. Healy, here.
Sure. I'll make a motion then that we vote to recommend approval of the police department interdepartment transfer request dated June 10, 2013, in the amount of $1,000 from police wages account to animal control salary.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of police department interdepartment transfer request dated June 10th, 2013, in the amount of $3,341 from animal control expenses to animal control salary.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
One comment to Mike. I think it's great that Leslie is going to spend time in Bear Cove Park because there's an awful lot of issues about dogs running loose there, and she'll do a great job.
Yeah, we've already had some positive feedback
Wonderful.
About having Leslie in that area.
Yep.
Okay. Apologize for the interruption. No. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the last one we have is an interdepartment transfer request, and I'm requesting $8,000 to be transferred from the police wages account to the police expense account. And this particular item would be the vehicle fuel account. And this is because we were budgeted for a lower number than what we'd be paying for the price of gas.
So as, just for the public and for the board, is that we set the budget for all utilities for all departments at the beginning of the budget process so that, you know, different departments aren't budgeting different amounts for gas and electricity. And so as the price changes throughout the budget year, we're a little short. And, you know, we expected a lot of departments to be a lot shorter than they were. So I want to give a kudos to all the departments, including the police department, which is, I think, our largest utilizer of fuel. And this is a very small transfer compared to what we were worried about earlier when the gas prices were running up. And the pump price was pushing $4, if you recall, a few months back.
Well, I think the notable point is you're moving money from the wages account to the fuel account, which means you're managing the staff well within the confines of the budget. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this one?
Just thank Mike. I know the police budget and the fire budget probably better than, well, maybe not Bobby Olson on the fire, but I know just about every number. And you and your deputy have done a great job managing it.
Thank you.
Really have.
Okay.
I just want to add that I was driving recently through Spada, Wisconsin, and the price of gas there is $4.20 a gallon for regular. So it's coming east.
It's coming with the storm tonight, huh? Okay. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll do it. Move to recommend approval of police department inter, intra-department transfer request dated June 10th, 2013, in the amount of $8,000 from wages account to vehicle fuel account.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you in a few minutes. Thank you.
All right, the next one is the South Shore Country Club. And we have Jay McGrail and the chair of the committee here, actually the entire committee, I believe.
Is it everybody?
Minus Kathy. Kathy, your term runs out in a few days. Okay. Hi. I'm here asking for a reserve fund transfer of $50,000 to increase our operating expense number to about 1.971,499. We've had some unanticipated capital expenses along with the change in accounting practices that doesn't allow us to net down those, any of our revenue. So when we built this budget, we didn't build it in a way that we can handle these capital expenses. The first, I have a handful of expenses that we had to incur. First was we had an irrigation lightning strike last summer. We have a type of irrigation system that's very prone to lightning strikes. It's called a decoder system, and it basically has electricity running all through the, through the field out there. And it just seems to be very prone to lightning. So we had a lightning strike hit. We had a final payment that was negotiated to the bowling alley consultant that we had to handle that when we built this budget, we didn't anticipate. Last winter, we had an HVAC unit in the attic of the main country club fail, and we had to replace it in an emergency because we lost heat in the facility, and that was during one of the blizzards in March. So obviously, we had to deal with that so that we wouldn't have broken pipes. We also incurred a fuel overage. We keep quite a, we have quite a large fleet also, not comparatively to police, but all our mowers and golf carts run on fuel. So there was an overage there based on what we budgeted. And then a section of what we use as our maintenance facility, the cart barn, which is located behind the ninth green, a portion of the roof collapsed last, last summer due to some rot on some boards. So we had to replace a section of that roof also. We didn't replace the whole roof. We just basically put a Band-Aid on it and fixed what we could. And those, those issues were some of the capital items that we, we had that we didn't anticipate. And so it caused us to be over our appropriation in fiscal 13.
So those items, I don't know if Jay has a total on them, but when I sat with Jay, they were well in excess of $50,000. And he covered a bunch of them within his existing structure. What the country club is asking for is a transfer really designed to increase their authorization to spend. Their authorization to spend is set by town meeting, like all departments, but unlike other departments, it's tied to their revenue. So I asked Jay two questions. One, did he have the revenue to cover it? The answer is yes. Do you have, but he doesn't have the appropriation to cover it, primarily because in the past, as you mentioned, this idea of netting expenses, you know, for example, in the simulator room or in the restaurant, we would net the revenue we collected against the utilities and just budget the net number. And the auditors told us they don't want us to do that anymore. They want us to budget the gross number of revenue and the gross number of expenses. If you notice, this year in the budget, their budget increased by about $200,000, tracking with revenue on the same amount. And so what we're asking for here is $50,000 increase in the authorization of the spend. They expect to bring in all the revenue. So they're targeting to have a balanced budget for the year where they bring in the revenue to cover their expenses. In this case, they'll be provided with $50,000. So if they started out the year with zero, we expected them to end up with zero. This now, with this transfer, they should end up their fund balance with $50,000. In order to get that back to the general fund, we'll have to go to town meeting next year and take that back if the board so desires. Ted? Okay, or do you need me to go through that again?
Now, I want you to know that those of you who've been to 42nd Street in Manhattan, there's a game they play called Three Card Monte.
Exactly what I was thinking, or hide the penny under the walnut.
Well, I assure you that's not happening, and I'd be happy to go through it again.
No.
No, no, I understand. What this is, unfortunately, the accounting rules that govern, municipal accounting standards that govern town budgets do not contemplate, do not contemplate a business operating within a budget to the degree that people like Irma, myself, and Paul, who have private sector experience, would expect. So it does permit you to do this, but I would remind folks that, as you know, the country club has been on a, an improvement scheme to make sure that they did just what Ted described, balancing their revenues and expenses. And the commitment that they have made had caught the attention of the Division of Revenue. And the Division of Revenue had suggested to us that in order to keep this open, just as we've just described, the revenue was anticipated and the expenses are what they are, that we must make sure we balance the books. So it is a requirement by the state that we do that, and it's a change in practice from previous, but we're going to do what the state requests so that we stay in their good graces. And just to put the emphasis on this, the state encouraged us to do this in a letter that they sent to the town administrator, I think that was three of
December.
December, saying that, "We're not going to approve your tax rate unless you do it this way." So that was the encouragement for us to make sure that if there is a shortfall, it will, it will come in accordingly. The, do you have any idea when this would be made whole, Ted? You only will see it in the town meeting vote of next year.
The expectation is that the country club will, will get revenue through June 30th of this year to cover all their expenses from July 1 of last year until June 30th this year. They're on target to have revenues that equal their expenses, which was what their stated goal was this year. And that includes their depreciation expense too. So there will be no negative fund balance this year. With this transfer, there should be a positive $50,000 fund balance. Fund balance, whether it's general fund or any other fund, is only accessible by town meeting vote. So if the desire of the town was to move the money back into the general fund where it's coming from, from the country club, you would have to have a vote at town meeting to transfer surplus revenue, or fund balance rather, from the country club to the general fund.
All right. Any question?
The only thing I would ask is, on your roof repair for the cart barn, how are you going to do that?
We already did it. It was last summer.
So it's done?
Yeah, it was last summer. All of these items were, except for the HVAC, were pretty much last summer stuff. So where our hopes were that we'd be able to, you know, continue to cut to be able to cover them. But I, we pretty much knew as soon as we went into the fiscal year that we were going to have a hard time with that budget number based on the changes in accounting.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Healy?
What was it about the bowling alley consultant that caught you off guard?
We, when we built this budget, we hadn't take, we hadn't put together the consulting contract yet. It was still being negotiated. It's, you know, we built this budget quite a while ago, and we're still in the process of putting that whole bowling alley consulting contract together.
And what did the consultant do, if I may ask?
He basically was the previous owner of the, of the operation, and he helped us transition into understanding how to run the bowling business and also helped us secure the leagues that were in place so that we didn't lose those leagues when we took over ownership. He had relationships with those people, and it was in our best interest to make sure that we, we had, you know, him on board to teach us about the bowling alley and also to maintain the leagues and keep them with us, which he did.
And that's proven, I think, I don't know if you have the numbers, Jay, but that's proven to be quite profitable, you know? The bowling is doing extremely well.
Yeah, it is. In our first year, we, if you take out the capital that we, that we spent, we came close to making about $80,000 net as opposed to $25,000 when he was running it. This year, it was a little bit down, but it's still much more than what we were making when he ran it.
Who was that?
Lou Humphrey.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. Can I have a motion, if I may?
Want me to do?
Sure.
I move we recommend approval of South Shore Country Club transfer request dated June 10, 2013, in the amount of $50,000 from the reserve fund.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I would ask our DBW director to come on up and go through his transfers, and then I'll take care of, with Betty Foley, the rest of the other non-departmental ones along with Sue. I know they're all waiting for everybody next door.
Advisory. It's a two-step process. First, you folks, and then they got to vote. So which one do you want to go through first?
Why don't we do Snow and Ice?
All right. Start with the big one.
Snow and Ice. We were over $154,576 this year in the budget. Basically, that was due to the amount of storms and the length of storms. We had over 21 events, sanding and snowstorms. This is to cover salaries, contractors, and all snow expenses.
We are making this as an interdepartment transfer
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
From group health insurance into, into the snow and ice budget. So we're not asking the reserve fund to cover this, or in that case, the general fund balance.
You have all the bills in now. Are we done, done?
Yes. They're all done.
And no more storms?
No more snowstorms. I can't count on hurricanes and other types of storms, but
You know, Jay, by the way, at the golf tournament on Monday, when we went to tee off, it was raining, and he was somehow able to stop it. So we are going to put that in everybody's goals and objectives going forward, I think.
I don't know if I can beat that.
Omegantrey.
And you have the tree crews lined up for this next season, I hope. I think that was, that was an unbelievably great thing you did.
Yes. We, if there's a threat of storms, we have good relationships with them, and we, we get the contracts early.
He's sitting in the audience. I'd be remiss in not commending our fire chief, who serves as the Channel 13 weather watcher. But he's very religious about informing us about the storms that are coming and the, and the impact that they might potentially have. So I commend him for that.
I appreciate reading that, too.
That's a good, yeah.
Just for the terms of the rolling average, because that's what guides us, how does this year compare? Do you
Last time I, as far as snowfall?
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure what the rolling average is. I think it's around 38 inches a year. But I don't have all the figures. The figures I do have, we were up quite a bit over 40 for the last year's snow, snowfall. It was more like 45. I didn't have one, one large storm, so
Just the continuous 21 events, as you said.
Yeah, it was actually over 21 events. There's a lot of small storms, one inch where it was sanding, and there's a lot of sanding events.
Paul?
Randy, at every storm event, does the entire town get sanded?
No.
Okay.
No. Well, if it's a storm event, if it snows, we will sand.
A plowable storm event?
Plowable storm, we will, we will, we will sand the whole town.
If it's just like a, like a half an inch or an inch or something like that?
It all depends on the weather conditions and where it's happening. The harbor might be totally different from South Hingham. A lot of the times, we just have to go up in South Hingham because that's where the snow is.
It's just discretionary, essentially.
Right. Usually what we do is we'll go out and we'll sand or salt the roads so they're safe during the night or whenever, and after a storm. That's a, that's a common practice.
And we have to remind, last year was kind of a different year, relative to that five-year average, so...
Last year was totally different.
Yes, so that's the nature of the beast here. Any other questions or comments? I have a question from the press. Could you?
Well, it's correct. Was it 250,000 in the budget to be given?
250.
500, 504,000.
But you were at least budget-
The budget for snow removal we carry is about half a million dollars.
So how do you use it?
Correct, 650. And in terms of the rolling five and 10-year averages, it's a little north of there. Not extremely north, but it's north.
I think we had one year you were over a million.
Correct.
Because I track it back to 97.
It was, yeah, I remember.
And why we don't have the peak year in as our budget is last year, last fiscal year, what did we spend? I believe we transferred $200,000 out of this budget to cover capital expenses. So we've had years where it doesn't snow that much.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, entertain a motion.
Okay, I will do this. All right. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the DPW Snow and Ice Interdepartmental Transfer Request dated June 7, 2013, in the amount of $154,576 from group insurance to DPW Snow and Ice.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Randy, you have a couple of others?
I have one for the transfer station.
We'll take that one out.
Do that one out? Yeah. It's an interdepartmental transfer request in the amount of $6,000. I would like to take the $6,000 from landfill expenses, put it into landfill salaries. And the reason is that, is because of all the storms that we've had, and damage, tree damage, we've had to grind and process that material two more times than we normally do. And it's about in the range of 125 hours to 150 hours of overtime. And there is, there is an excess of around $1,000 in there for any events that come up, or any overtime that I, that I incur from this point out.
Do you have an estimate as to what the, when you finish the grinding and make it salable? Has, that program seems to be underway.
Yes, that's, that's the composting program. That's, we don't, we use some wood chips, but not, this is, this here is mainly to cover the wood chips. But the composting program, I think we netted last year of $12,000. And this year, it's already started. We've been selling, it's unfinished compost, but compost, New England Organics, they had customers, so they've taken right around 800 yards, leaving, which is very good for us, because it leaves us for room for bringing in more material. And Wamuth has also started bringing in material. So we're, we're composting that material for spring cleanups.
What do you do with the wood chips?
The wood chips, we usually, if they're clean enough, what we'll do is we'll sell them to a fuel plant. And we don't sell them, the, the actual, it's, I forgot the name of it. The vendor that, that takes care of the, the wood chips, if they're clean enough, he'll sell them to a power plant in the north, and there is no expense to us. And that's at least 100 yards, 200. I think, I think we got, had 500 yards last year at no expense to us getting taken away. All the other ones is under contract through the Social Recycling Cooperative, and that's the grounding contract itself, and they take it away for $2 a yard. So we do pay to get rid of that material. We have no place for it, especially the grindings. So normally, right after that's, the material is grounded, it's hauled out. That's part of this cost also.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I move to recommend approval of landfill intra-department transfer request dated June 7, 2013, in the amount of $6,000 from landfill expenses to landfill salaries.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and one more?
Last, Randy's last transfer is $30,000 for radios and-
Radios.
Brief the board on that.
This is an interdepartmental transfer in the amount of $30,000 from DPW salaries to DPW expenses for new radios, which will put us on the high band and able to talk to the other departments. The-
What departments?
Excuse me?
What departments?
Police, Fire, Light, and School Department. I got them all right. The chief, the chief came to me, and I did have a plan to replace the radios by, by the new radios for all the supervisors. It would require some special equipment at the repeater. And what I would do, what I, what I had planned to do is to change them out as the capital budget, and I replaced my vehicles. Because we did not hire a tree climber until halfway through the year, and unfortunately, one of the tree climbers we hired had left, we have a roundabout, from what my figuring, about $60,000 in surplus in salaries. Now, my thought was, instead of buying the equipment to transfer our low-band radios to the high band, and after it's all completed, our fleet is completed with the radio, new radios, that equipment would be useless. So in order to save the town money, number one, I'm buying in bulk, and number two, we wouldn't have to pay for that piece of equipment. So it's kind of an out-of-box, out-of-the-box thinking on my part. Hopefully, you'll agree, and we can get all the radios changed around.
So we're asking to spend capital money, and I asked Sue Nickerson, who works with the Capital Outlay Committee, to talk to the committee and gain their insight, and she'll share that with you.
Sue Nickerson?
Hello.
Tim, nice to see you.
I emailed Ray Isaby, who is the Chair of Capital Outlay, on Randy's request. And I just got the email. I'm sorry I couldn't make copies for you. "Sue, confirming our discussion. I read the request from Randy. Based upon the information in the request and our discussion, I believe that it makes sense to permit the excess funds to be used to purchase the radios for $30,000 at this time. Ideally, it would be preferable to return the funds to the town. However, the purchase of the radio is a suitable alternative use for the funds for the following reasons. From a public safety perspective, it is a good idea to have all town departments on the same frequency during emergencies and events sooner rather than later. If the converter is purchased now in lieu of new radios, it will be unnecessary when the new radios are ultimately purchased. The bulk purchasing rate will reduce the ultimate cost of the new equipment. Please let me know if you have any questions."
And the person who handles a lot of our radios, or the personnel that handle a lot of our radio stuff, is our Fire Department, our Chief and our Deputy, and they have opinions they'd like to share with you about this.
All right, if, just, I'm sensitive to the time. We're half an hour late.
I'm going to charge through the remaining.
I would like to weigh in on this. Basically, what the town, up until about five years ago, DPW and Light Department were on a frequency spectrum that nobody could talk to. Fire was on a spectrum that nobody could talk to. Police was on a spectrum that nobody could talk to. Light Department was on a spectrum that nobody could talk to. Fire, Police, Light Department, and School Department have all made the transition into one, one spectrum. The last leg of the, of that is DPW. When, when DPW comes on the board, this one radio will talk to anybody in any department at any time they need to. Fire can talk to Police. A fire engine can talk to a school bus if he needs to get it down the street during flooding. We could call a plow truck. We can talk to the Light Department. You people could call us directly if you had one of these, and we, we can make those available to you. This is a win-win situation for us. And there is some work going on. We're very fortunate that Aquarian Water is allowing us to use their water tank at Turkey Hill for some of the infrastructure. There's work going on up there that will have to be done twice if this doesn't go through right now. So this is a win-win situation for the town.
This is a longstanding problem that the chief has brought certainly to my attention as I've been a selectman, so it's now come to fruition. Both chiefs, thank you.
Finally. So what are you going to do with the bucket loads of radios?
They're going to go into the vehicles. I'm changing them all out.
Okay, could, can I have a motion on this issue, please?
I move to recommend approval of DPW intra-department transfer request dated June 7, 2013, in the amount of $30,000 from DPW salary to DPW expenses.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. Thank you very much.
Ms. Chairman, I know we're a little behind schedule. We have a bunch of other transfers, but they're all transfers that Betty and I can handle. I might need to go get Sue from next door, but all the departments, we've taken care of that are here to make a presentation. So if you want to put this at the back of your agenda and go through other things, I'd be happy to-
I don't want to keep the interviewees waiting. We've kept them, so I'd like to, if that's okay with my colleagues, we'll come back to this. Okay. Thank you very much. Is Michael going to be first, Mike? Yeah, okay. We have two candidates for the Office of Police Patrolmen, Michael Dunley and Scott Miller. Mr. Dunley, come, come on in. My apologies for keeping you waiting. It took a little longer than we expected.
Welcome. How are you, sir?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Well, thank you for, for expressing interest in a job that's so critical to the town's success. And I welcome you back. Nice to see you again. Perhaps if there's any updates you'd like to give us, I'd like to give you a few minutes to tell us a little bit and the public at home about yourself, so if you-
My name's Michael Dunley. 29 years old. Worked here for, worked for the Hingham Police Department as a special officer. I was hired in 2009. Enjoy working with the department very much, and seeking a full-time career with them. Since last year, I do have a few updates on my resume, mostly some training. Some training that took place at the Massachusetts State Police Academy in New Braintree, doing some practical patrol scenarios for the new recruits that were out there, that were hired last year. Another update I'd like to add in is, I was fortunate enough to join the Hingham Police Department with active school shooter training, which, in the wake of all the news that they've had lately, this was, this was great training and good information to have. God forbid something arise, you know? I'm a little more prepared to go if something happens.
Okay, good, good. And you're still in Quincy College?
I'm still enrolled.
Okay, very good. All right, we have some questions. These are, we'll take turns asking, just a few minutes. That will take of your time, and again, we thank you for your patience. So Ms. Louder, if I may ask you to begin?
Michael, thank you for coming back.
Thank you, ma'am.
You talk about your philosophy of community policing in light of the fact that we now have Derby Street at one end, Shipyard at the other, and lots of people, and the square in between.
Well, I can say one thing about community policing in this town, is it is very effective, and it works very well. Not only with those locations, but also people with the Citizens' Police Academy, which I may be able to bring that up later. But Derby Street, yes, lots of, lots of stores in Derby Street. There's a, there's a ton of interaction with the public, especially during Christmas season. They actually hire a few details up there to help with traffic and, and just maintain a presence, and try to keep everybody from stealing each other's parking spots during Christmas. So Shipyard, up and growing place. I believe there's a new Aker store going in, Trader Joe's, I believe it's, you know, that, that should bring in some, some new people. And as well as the condos down there, residents. Having more residents is, which means there's probably going to be more calls for service and more interaction with those people. So I'd say, with the reputation that the, the Hingham Police Department has as far as interacting with the community, I think it'll work out very well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hill?
Sure. Mike, looking at your resume, you clearly got a lot of training and exposure for this position. What's your view with respect to, well, let me back up a minute. Have you, have you been in situations where you've made arrests?
No. I have been in situations where, where I have supervised people in custody, not, not so much where I've made the arrest myself.
What in your mind is the single most valuable asset that a police officer has?
Integrity and honesty. You know, without that, a police officer needs basically, basically be a credible person.
What weapon in your arsenal would you regard as the most valuable?
Okay. If I may, go around the table, if that's okay with you. You said integrity and honesty were important. Do you have any other qualities that you'd like to see that maybe that would describe you?
Well, I believe I'm a very fair person. As far as being a police officer goes, here in Massachusetts, a police officer has a lot of discretion, especially when it comes to traffic stops and things of that nature. And, you know, I, I believe I'm a very fair person, and, and take every situation differently and act on whatever the element of that situation is.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Irma?
What skills and knowledge do you bring that would benefit the Hingham Police Department?
Well, actually, I, I do have a background of cars and automobiles. I was a tinkerer as a kid. Took many things apart and didn't put them back together. But maintaining the cruisers is, is huge. And I have a lot of knowledge, knowledge and background with that. In fact, if you see, I don't know if you got that second page of my resume. I did visit an emergency vehicle outfitting company out in Marlboro, Mass., just on my own time, just to see what they had for new products, because they, they don't make the Crown Victoria anymore. So, you know, just, just for my own peace of mind, if you will. Basically seeing what they have available and seeing what's out there.
Is that one of your hobbies?
One of them. I'm an avid motorcycle rider. I, I have two Harley Davidsons-
Oh, wow.
-which I try and use as much as I can. This week is Laconia Bike Week, so I'm going to try and shoot up there this weekend.
Good. Mr. Hill?
Have you traveled outside of this area, just out of curiosity?
For leisure, vacation? Yes. I-
Where do you go when you go on vacation?
I frequent Florida, Marco Island.
Nice.
Down in the Gulf Coast. Sometimes I drive, sometimes I fly. All depends on scheduling an airfare. In fact, I was, I didn't go to Marco in February, but I was recently in Disney World for School Vacation Week. It was a very good time.
Can you describe any stressful situations that you've had to handle?
I remember this one stressful situation that I had. I was actually working a detail as a special officer down at the Derby Street Plaza, where I got some, I got a report of a man and woman fighting- I, I got some, I got a report of a man and woman fighting, fighting each other. So I had to run over and assess that situation, and being relatively new at the time, I didn't quite know exactly how to handle it, and as far as talking on the radio goes and telling other cruises what's going on, I kinda had a tunnel vision where, you know, I, I didn't know what I was thinking sometime, at some time, and actually it turned out that I did better than I thought just talking to those officers. But, you know, it was, it was one of the times I, I really had to act on a situation, and it was different, it's a change of pace, usually typically doesn't happen on details, so.
Okay. If I may, will be one final question from each of us, if you would. So Irma?
Give you an easy one. How would you rate your communication skills and what have you done to improve them?
Okay. I feel I have very good communication skills. I try my best, my, my communication skills, I'm more of a hands-on type person, so if I can do it by waving my hands around like I am now, I usually get, usually understand, usually get my point across a little better. Not that, nothing to do with ethnicity, you know? I mean, I am Sicilian, but...
It's one in the plus.
Improvements I've made, actually, I, Mr. Healy wasn't here last year, but I had a problem with public speaking last year, and I've, I've worked here and there to try and improve that quality and trying to make that quality better, which I, I think so far tonight I'm doing a good job. But that's also the key to communication is some eye contact and, and that.
Good.
Thank you.
Mr. Healy?
Can I call you Mike?
Certainly.
Mike, the position of a police officer, and a Hingham police officer in particular, is one of immense importance to the townspeople, and I'm curious to know if you prioritize in importance the, the Fourth, the Fifth, or the Sixth Constitutional Amendment, Fourth Amendment, Fifth Amendment, or Sixth Amendment. I know it may be a little bit of a hard question for you, Fourth Amendment with respect to seizure, Fifth Amendment as to Miranda?
Yeah.
You've had exposure to that, I take it?
Yes.
The Sixth Amendment. Any thoughts?
I'm very, I'm very intrigued by the, the Fourth Amendment.
Interesting way to describe it.
In fact, I, I, I thought about that as far as, I thought one of the questions tonight would be about education. So I, I actually prepared myself, which, where my answer would have something to do with the Fourth Amendment, about updating or keeping yourself in check when it comes to Fourth Amendment laws and case law, because a, a police officer would have to make sure they're up to date on all that when, because if a higher court makes a decision on something, that could affect how a police officer acts out on the street. While I was taking college classes, and we talked about that, I, I always thought about ways I could, I could talk to someone but not violate their rights and all that, you know, so...
It's a neat trick.
It's, it's, it's very interesting, and, you know, I look forward to try, to try and follow that throughout my whole career.
Good enough.
Thank you. You're welcome, sir.
I'll get a little technical. Can you describe for me the difference between reasonable suspicion and probable cause?
I've seen that once or twice before. Well, in a nutshell, probably, probable cause means that someone probably did it. You know, there's, it's, you know, there's, there's specific and articulable facts that, that someone had committed a crime. As with reasonable suspicion, would be more or less, more than a hunch, you know, you, you see, for example, you see a man in a trench coat walking down the street in weather like we had a couple Fridays ago. You could reasonably suspect that maybe that person's up to no good. It's not quite, it's not quite...
That's what we have the police academy for.
Yeah.
Flesh is all that.
I'll, I'll learn about that later.
Very good. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mike, for your time and your interest. We, we very much appreciate it, and your candor and your answers. That makes our selection difficult. So I thank you for coming in this evening, and we expect in about a week or so that we'll, the chief will advise you of our decision. Okay?
Okay.
Best of luck to you.
Best of luck to you. Thank you very much. Good to see you. Nice to see you again.
While you're in the section.
Yeah.
I'm right back. Mr. Candidate, Scott Miller?
Hi.
Scott.
This is me.
Scott, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Okay. Have a seat wherever you're comfortable there? Sure, that's fine. And you might want to bring the microphone just a little closer to you so the folks at home can hear you. We'll try to make this as informal as possible, so get relaxed, take a deep breath, and, and as maybe start out, you've been here before, so maybe you'd like to update us on your resume and inform the board, so please, if you would. This is Scott Miller. Thank you.
Since we last left off, I believe about 10 months ago, I'm still working at North Quincy High School as a security officer. I'm still a basketball official. I've been doing a lot of that. Ah, let's see here, my, my brother had a baby recently, so I'm an uncle, first, first kid, so that's exciting.
Congratulations.
Still engaged to my fiancee Danielle. It's going great. We moved to Hingham in October, so we're back in Hingham, which is very nice, and that's about it.
Good, okay. So, Mr. Healy, can I ask you maybe to start with the questions, if you're comfortable?
Sure. Mr. Mill, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you until just now, but that position as a security officer at the North Quincy High strikes me as one where you have quite a bit of contact with the students there. Is that true?
That is true, yes.
Are you armed in that capacity?
No.
All right. And how do you liaise with the Quincy Police in your role there?
We have a school resource officer there at all times. We have one at North Quincy, one at Quincy High, so, and we're very, very close. Our offices actually abut each other, so we're in communication with each other at all times. He helps us out with situations with drugs or fights and things like that.
And did you work, I see that you completed your bachelor's degree at Westfield State?
Yes.
In roughly the same time period that you were a security officer at the North Quincy High. How did, how did all that fit in? Did you work in the summer at North Quincy?
No, what happened was, when I finished at Westfield State in 2008, I had two credits to make up.
Okay, all right.
And I just kinda...
Okay.
Took a couple years to get around to it.
And you're the class of 2003. What neighborhood did you grow up in?
I grew up on Pine Grove Road.
Okay.
Behind the middle school.
Up in South Hingham, yeah. All right, I'll hold for now.
Yeah, okay. Irma?
Scott, it's good to see you again.
Good to see you too.
Talk a little bit about your philosophy of community policing and also your experiences at Quincy High, because that's a very diverse environment in Quincy.
Sure. Community policing in terms of Hingham?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see, it's, in a town like Hingham, with the community policing is extremely important. In order to keep the communities like the Hingham, safer, any community to that matter, you need to have an open line of communication with that, with the members of the community. You also, you need to have a good relationship with that community. Now, in order to do these things, a lot of the things that Hingham does is they have programs so that the police can interact with the community. For example, the DARE program, you get the kids early, you teach them about drug abuse and alcohol abuse, and now you've, you've formed that relationship with the kids and you've humanized that police officer now that they can see him not just as a cop, but also as a person. And the DARE program also forms that, that open line of communication and relationship with the school and also with the parents. And also another, another way that they use community policing is they have the Buckle Up program. You have the signs all over Hingham, Buckle Up. You know, a lot of those, I think it was eight of them, were government grant, and the other 22 or 23 were, were donated by people or businesses around town. So the businesses and the, now the businesses and the police department have an open relationship together. They're working together to keep the community safe. Another way with the businesses is the Designated Driver Program, where if, if you're going to a restaurant and you wanna, you select designated driver, that person will be able to drink non-alcoholic beverages for free at that establishment while they are there. So with these programs, it really helps to create a great relationship with the community and keep the community safe. What was the second question with the...
How does your relationship, and what have you learned from Quincy High that you can bring to Hingham?
Well, good question. You need to have very good communication skills in a job as a police officer, and especially it translates well, translates well to my position. So if I'm at the front desk all afternoon and I'm dealing with people coming in, I need to, and it's, it's very difficult because Quincy, the school that I work in is 50% Asian, 50%. So half the people that come into the building don't speak any English. So what I have to do is communicate with them and get to understand why they're in that building and get them to where they're going, which is very, very difficult at times. It gets frustrating, but after about five years of doing it, you kind of figure it out and get, get the gist of what they, what they're trying to do.
Can you speak Chinese?
I cannot. I should by now, but...
Any phrases?
No.
Let me just pick up, have you ever been in any stressful situations?
Yes. I mentioned the situation the last time I was here, when it was February of 2010, there was a shooting at, it was about 3:30 PM after school. I was the only security officer there at the time, and I had heard commotion in the back of the building. I went to check on it, and a student had been shot in the leg. Now, at that point, there was basketball games going on, wrestling practice, other things going on in the building. I needed to get that building into a lockdown immediately, which we had never done outside of school hours. So this is a first, and it was my second year on the job. I didn't really know what I was doing, but I got the building in a lockdown. I contacted the police right away. I found two of the suspects were fighting in the gym, in the cafeteria. I had two administrators come and help break up the fight and hold them there until the police came, and then two of those suspects actually were the ones that shot the kid, and they were arrested, and I think they're actually in jail right now. But after that, everyone was safe. No one else got hurt. The kid was shot in the leg. He survived. He's fine, but I think that was one of the most stressful situations I've dealt with in my life.
Okay, very good. Mr. Healy?
Mr. Miller, I asked your other colleague who came in here for the interview this question, so I'll, I'll ask you. Fourth Amendment, Fifth Amendment, Sixth Amendment, do you prioritize the importance of any of those in your role as a police officer in the town of Hingham?
In terms of search and seizure, Miranda and...
Exactly.
I don't know.
Confrontation.
Yeah. Do you prioritize them?
You're the candidate.
I'm just gonna, I want to answer the question properly, that's all. Yeah, I, I mean...
How so?
In, in terms of which is more important?
Yeah.
I guess it would depend on the situation.
There's no, there's no right or wrong answer. I'm just exploring where you come in on this kind of thing, that's all.
Okay.
Just curious.
I've never really had experience in this kind of thing.
Yeah.
I'm not really sure how to answer it.
That's, that's okay. That's what the academy's for.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Irma?
Do you play basketball?
I do. Yes.
We have a candidate for the next DARE basketball game.
There we go, yeah. I can shoot the three.
What skills do you bring to Hingham?
Well, as I said before, the, my position with the Quincy Public Schools, it's really helped me a lot in the past five years in terms of communication, in terms of dealing with irate people, learning how to not get irate yourself, it's not the proper thing to do, keep your cool, and try and calm them down. That's a big one I've learned, because this happens a lot. Also stressful situations, I've learned a lot about how to deal with stressful situations because they come up more than you think, in terms of kids getting in fights and that shooting. So I think my experience there and those skills that I have learned in the past five years can really translate into becoming a good police officer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Follow-up. What, what quality would you think is most important in a police officer?
Honesty. Honesty's gotta be the most important part of being a police officer, because if you're not honest, you can't be trusted. If you can't be trusted, you cannot be a police officer. No one's gonna trust you. If you write a report up and you've been dishonest, no one's gonna believe your report. It's not gonna hold up in court. Your colleagues aren't gonna trust you, so I think honesty is the most important part of being a police officer.
All right, one last question.
I'm good.
Yeah?
I snuck in two or three.
Got that, Paul? You okay? Or do you have anything else you'd like to...
I have a whole slew, but I'm not gonna weigh you down, Mr. Miller. I, I just do want to ask this, though. I mean, in terms of the, the honesty issue, you're gonna be working with other men and How, where would you rate the importance of the bond that you would form with them as a police officer?
That's extremely important, too. That's right up there with honesty. You need to, they have to have your back, you need to have their back, and you need to form, form that relationship. It's gonna come with time. Once you form that relationship together, I think that's extremely important as well, yeah.
Okay, thank you. If I were to ask you to pick three words to describe yourself, could you pick three?
Yeah. Honest.
Yeah.
Hardworking. And loyal.
Very good. Okay, thank you. All right, our, our process is that we take your answers to your questions that we've asked, and we look for a recommendation from the chief, and, you know, in the next week or so, he'll be back to you on our selection, but we, I would want to thank you for putting your name forward as a candidate, and thank you for giving us your time this evening and your candid and your answers. So, thank you, and we wish you well. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks for having me.
Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chief Burina.
Thanks, chief.
Well, I think we'll wait for Ted to, if he's ready. Ah, he heard the gong coming in from the... Okay, we'll continue our discussion on reserve funds, which had to do with general town issues, so I'll let Mr. Alexiades catch his breath and...
Sure.
Get your list out and...
The next one on my pile would be veterans' salaries, in the amount of $23,708. The transfers to color salaries that we had originally expected to be reimbursed in a relationship with the town of Situate in a regionalization effort that worked well for a while, and as Situate grew in size and scope of their, their need for their veterans, if you recall, when we started that analysis, or that process, they had, I believe they had three active cases. You know, within six months, we had increased their caseload to 12, and they just outgrew our ability to serve them, so we had to move back out, and this is the salary differential that we had cut our budget to account for in fiscal 13.
Okay. Any questions for my colleagues?
No, I'm good.
Good, okay. Just as an aside, the issue of veteran services organization support came up on an interview I conducted this morning on WATD, so it relate later to a vote we have to take, but there is a lot of interest out there on this, on this matter. All right, I'll take a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of veterans' interdepartment transfer request dated June 7, 2013, in the amount of $23,708 from group insurance to veteran salary.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next one is an $8,400 interdepartment transfer. Again, it's coming from group health insurance, and it... Just as an aside, the issue of veteran services organization support came up on an interview I conducted this morning on WATD, so it will relate later to a vote we have to take, but there is a lot of interest out there on this matter. All right, I'll take a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of veterans' interdepartment transfer request dated June 7, 2013 in the amount of $23,708 from group insurance to veteran's salary.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next one is an $8,400 interdepartment transfer. Again, it's coming from group health insurance and it is going to town elections for salaries and expenses to cover the cost of the special state election due to Senator Kerry moving on to the, moving out of the Senate.
Okay, and that is the amount that Irene had told us, correct? Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve town, to recommend approval of town elections' interdepartment transfer request dated June 7, 2013 in the amount of $8,400 from group insurance to town elections.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next one I have in my packet is an intradepartment transfer of $7,200 from town hall expenses to town hall salaries. An employee was out for an extended absence due to surgery and we had to cover with a combination of substitute and overtime.
Okay. Any questions?
None.
None.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of selectment slash town administrator intradepartment transfer request dated June 10, 2013 in the amount of $7,200 from town hall expenses to town hall salaries.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next one I have in my package is $96,000. This is a transfer from the reserve fund of four legal services and I think, as you know, we had a number of extraordinary cases. The bulk of the legal expenses that we think were a little extraordinary for us were, you know, dealing with the Avalon Bay case. And we'd previously budgeted with counsel about $10,000 to start that case and it turned out to be about $50,000 before we switched to the new litigation counsel.
Is there anybody, any other issue within the legal services?
That was the primary one. Betty, of course, has all the schedules, which I think she's given to you, that detail all the different caseloads that we've had. You know, in terms of our legal services budget, although we have expended it again, you know, a lot of the work we're doing with our legal services team is really trying to avoid litigation. And I asked Betty to go back and look through the record, but, you know, we can't, we're pretty sure that within the last two years, we have not had an action brought against the town. It's the town utilizing its legal services to bring actions forward, which is a big difference from my first 10 or 15 years working here where we had quite a few actions coming at us. And part of that is working with the permitting boards and working with all the boards to say, before you get into something that you think might be a legal matter, ask us, talk to us. As you know, we now have a budget process where all of our attorneys have to give us budget items for the work that they do and we hold them to that budget and we ask them not to, you know, give us a bill three months later that's $40,000 when we were expecting five.
Any other discussion?
No, just concerned that this is a growing and every year we talk about it. I'm gonna sound like Karen Johnson next door. We don't have a script, but I'll probably sound like her that this, I'm just concerned this is continuing to grow. That's all.
Yeah, it is, no question. It's an issue and unfortunately, the world we live in has become more complicated and the unanticipated actions that we have to take, you're right in raising the concerns because sometimes we do things to protect ourselves and it seems difficult that we have to do that. All right, any other questions? Yes, Carol? It's Carol Meyer from the Hingham Journal. Thank you.
What was the total legal budget that this is being added to and also, like, what kind of expenses that you can say that aren't confidential, whatever, related to Avalon Bay? I'm not, like, what those were related to that piece?
Sure. So the total legal services budget is $232,000. We'll be adding this 96 to it. And the work related to Avalon Bay, well, Avalon Bay was a two-pronged process. One, we had to deal with the application of their 40B and the defense of the town in terms of our understanding that we are over the threshold that would eliminate 40Bs from being mandated on the town. We're over the 10% threshold due to the 25% calculation at Lyndon Ponds and we had to argue that with the Housing Appeals Court. The other side of it, of course, was the transactional costs of trying to close on a $3.7 million property in, I don't know, about a week and a half. So that took quite a bit of legal effort to get through.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Just like to make a brief one.
Sure.
I just know from my experience working on the planning board and with the ZBA that almost every decision that we make is subject to appeal. And with the assistance of Susan Murphy in recent years, I can't remember a decision that we've made that's been appealed. So, yeah, it does cost money for her time to assist us, but it keeps us out of court like Bruce said, so there is a value there. It's a lot of money, but this isn't, you know, a 50-cent operation either.
If I could just follow up with what you said, Paul, to concur, we've actually sent Susan into, and we had previously sent Jim Toomey into the departments, especially the permitting departments and the regulatory boards, planning board, conservation, historical and zoning, and worked with them on how to write the opinions. Because one of the things we heard from the court on one of our cases that we had lost a few years back was that all the facts are there, but they just weren't included in the opinion in the right language. Because again, we were trying to be frugal, write the opinion with staff and, you know, maybe staff didn't quite understand how to link the legal to the opinion. And so she's really been very helpful, you know, we're working with CONSCOM and zoning on those issues.
Motion, Todd?
Sure, please. I'd move that we recommend approval of selectment, glasses time first, town administrator transfer request dated June 10, 2013 in the amount of $96,000 from the reserve fund to legal services.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Two more?
We're moving down. We only have any left.
Two more.
Two more, yeah.
All right, the next one is $37,924.
Yeah.
And it is for emergency water service. For those of you, you recall, the last rate case with Aquarian afforded them to increase their rates and those rates also, not only are for homeowners and businesses, but for the town with respect to their fire hydrants. We pay a fee to Aquarian to make sure there's water at the hydrants at all times. It's a rather substantial fee and, you know, the increase that they received at the last rate hearing occurred after the budget cycle. If you remember a town meeting, we had an unpaid bill and that was also part of that because it occurred after the budget year, too. And so this is the follow-up for the second fiscal year.
Do we look when we, a large development like the shipyard, do we look at what that's gonna cost us for the amount of hydrants that get put in there, especially where we have such high density?
We have a planning, before a member of the planning board with us and he might be able to help with that answer, I will tell you that, you know, they have to, all developments have to work through the Aquarian to do a water balancing.
Yep.
And the fire hydrants are just mandated as part of, you know, the planning board's code.
Yep, and I'm sure Duff gets involved in that to make sure we have enough hydrants there.
Chief Duff?
I hope it's Chief Duff, unless there's another Jeff that I don't know about.
It's usually not the chief. We typically work with Dave Danstra to, when a plan is submitted, it's gone through a variety of different boards, Board of Health, Water Company, Bay Department, Police and Highway. They'll add any suggestions or concerns that they have and we typically address it. But we don't, the planning board did not issue permits or approvals unless a project could be serviced by the water. Absolutely not, ever.
I've been fascinated by when we do these large developments, the economic impact. Because we always look at the plus side and we don't look at the other side of the scale in terms of what...
We had an economic analysis presented to us initially on the shipyard when it was submitted preliminarily with respect to the echo effect and the tax revenue and the increased demands on the school system. So we went all through that in quite some detail, actually.
Good. Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I recommend approval of emergency water transfer requests dated June 11, 2013 in the amount of $37,924 from the reserve fund to emergency water service.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last one, Mr.?
And the last one is a transfer request of $10,000. It is a transfer from the reserve fund and it is for the performance part of my contract. We were able to cover 5,000 of it within the budget and we're gonna need 10,000 from another source.
Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll recommend that we approve, I'll move to recommend approval of selectment slash town administrator transfer request dated June 10, 2013 in the amount of $10,000 from the reserve fund to selectmen salaries.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Alexiades, for walking us through that lengthy list. We have some other actions. An issue right before us, which I've hopefully had an opportunity to review, is to amend a veteran services intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Hingham and Cohasset. And this is an issue that has been evolving as a result of some work the RVSO, Veteran Services Officer, has been doing under the guidance, I think, of Coleman Lee, Coleman Ne, the secretary, as well as our town administrators, both in Hingham and in Cohasset. So, Mr., is there anything you'd like to add?
You know, this is a formalization of an agreement that we, you know, ran informally for a few months. We've really utilized our veterans' department here and specifically Keith and I can't, you all know, because I've told you all of this individually, of course, but I'll say it here publicly, I just can't speak highly enough for the work he does, both for us and for the region. You guys remember the presentation that we had back in February and what we're really trying to do is, and I think we are there, as a regional authority or resource for veteran services. And we've now, we've been in Situate, we're in Cohasset, and we're available to go into any other town in the area that needs us to help them either establish and set up how to run their veterans' department, but more importantly, to try to talk about how to be prepared for the next wave of veterans. Because, you know, the veterans' departments for the last 20 years, you know, are not gonna be able to serve the veterans for the next 20 years. Veterans are coming home now with just a variety of different situations and we really need to, I think we owe it to them, it's a sense of obligation, at least from my perspective, that we owe it to them to be there to help them re-enter society in any way. And sometimes there are difficulties there, especially when you come back and the economy is not quite as robust as it was when you left. And I think it's really unfair to ask, you know, our sons and daughters to leave, go fight for us, come back, and there's no place for them. So Keith's done a great job and also a great job working with other services within the departments and the regions, police, et cetera, to make sure that we understand what type of services are needed in certain situations.
Okay, any questions?
I'd just like to make a comment if I could. I heartily concur with what Ted has just said. In a personal sense, my son and my wife and I were presented with a blue star flag last week. My son is going into the service as a second lieutenant and Steve Bray and Bob Beal came to the house, coordinated with Keith German and his offices. And it made us feel, right from the outset of this experience, that, you know, we had a support structure in place and that was a pretty good feeling, considering that relatively few young men and women from this town joined the service. So that is something that I definitely support.
I think also Keith and Lisa working with the other towns sets up a standardization of business processes that will embrace the incoming vets, but also as they move from town to town, if everybody's using the same business processes and the same peoples, it's seamless.
That's a good point. That's an excellent point. And I, that's Coleman Ne's message, that if we can make it easy for the veterans, who have certainly made it easy for us, we need to help in the transition increasingly, the role they play in helping them get through the benefit, various benefit programs, that's also helpful. So with those comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I make a motion to sign the amended veteran services intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Hingham and Cohasset, Massachusetts.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have some appointments to the Memorial Bell Tower Committee, which I received a letter, I hope some of you did, from Jane Malmi, the work that they're doing. So perhaps Mr. Healy, it's on the bottom of the page? Yes, that's it, yeah.
Sure. I'll make a motion then that we vote to appoint the following as members of the Memorial Bell Tower Committee for the ensuing year. Kenneth Drescher, Joan Ghetto, Dorcas Wagner, Anne Salon.
Shilhan.
Shilhan, thank you. Michael Shilhan and Martha Ryan.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a Shade Creek Committee.
Oh, yeah. This is very exciting. Thank you, Dorothy. I make a motion to appoint Dorothy Mangano to the Shade Tree Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a vote, we had an executive session where we voted in a discussion to a three-year employment contract with our town administrator Ted Alexiades. We must take that vote formally in public, which I would entertain a motion to do.
I'll move to ratify the executive session vote to sign a three-year employment contract with town administrator Ted Alexiades.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I could, two comments, and I guess this is the first time I've done a municipal agreement. I wish it had been more deliberate and maybe it's, this is my...
I'm sorry, the municipal, you mean Ted's contract?
Yes, that there had been a longer...
Set a municipal agreement.
Oh, contract, sorry.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure I was...
Same thing.
Yeah, I understand, okay.
He's not a municipal resource, really. Just kidding, Ted. And also, I'm disappointed we didn't do any benchmarking because I require lots of information, as you all know. See, that's my only disappointment, that we didn't take a little bit more time.
Well, we have time. We have some upcoming contracts to discuss, so that would be...
Oh, good. So we'll do benchmarking on all of them.
We can start to do that process now?
Excellent.
Okay. So you made a second. Any further discussion? All set? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the, before we vote on the next...
Thank you.
You're most welcome. Thank you. You can leave the pound of flesh.
Oh, he's not gonna give us all five-pound boxes of chocolates? I take back my vote.
I'll have them here for you tomorrow morning.
I'm cheap. May just make sure they're good chocolate, okay?
Soft centers.
Those of you who watch the Hingham cable TV channel know that last week Ted and I did a, do a monthly show, it's really the chairman's show, and we made a plea for, to encourage the town to help the high school fields get through the high school fields project, which is, which I'll ask Ted to comment on. But I ran into, as we're coming into the meeting tonight, I ran into Superintendent Gallo and, as she said, it's a challenging process, but it's moving along. And perhaps you could give us where you understand the fields project to be at this juncture?
Sure. My, first of all, the permitting boards are meeting with the school department personnel to make sure that we move through the remaining process. It's not really permitting now, it's more of, you know, stepping through the construction phase of it. You know, they had a low in fundraising, which has picked up now, thanks to impart yours and many others' plea to the general public. You know, fundraising sometimes, you know, can lose steam after you have a town meeting vote and we also have quite a few fundraising activities going on simultaneously, so there's a little bit of weariness sometimes on people to answer the phone for yet another fundraising activity. Obviously, this is very important and we still hope and encourage people to participate. They are on track to begin construction of the field complex and the light complex. They expect to, they expect to award a contract shortly and I'm sure they're meeting schedule to know what the timeframe is on that. They have identified the bidder. They've retained the services of... They've retained the services of Bob Garrity, those of you know, who's worked on virtually every major project we've had, and here as a volunteer. He specializes as an attorney in municipal contracting, so they've selected the best, of course. And, you know, they've pulled back on the concession stand as they're looking at a redesign with Gale Associates to lower that cost, because the bids on the main project were a little higher than they expected.
Do you have an amount?
Right now, they're looking -- I had a conversation this afternoon with the chairman of the board of -- the chairman of the school committee, and they actually think that they're on target right now.
Which is?
Which is total budget. The -- I believe it's -- I don't want to give you the wrong number, I apologize. I think it's about 5.6 million, but I don't know the exact number, and that includes all of their contingencies. Right now, with their fundraising target, if they achieve it, and we talked about a couple of letters of credits they're going to provide us, because some of their heavier donors have asked to spread the money out over a few years, which we can't do. But if we have access to a letter of credit that if the donations aren't made, we could at least sign contracts to begin construction, because we'd be able to access similar, Paul and the Planning Board, you know, with a letter of credit for a developer, that you might not access if they don't -- if they do what they're supposed to, et cetera.
It's a condition, actually.
Yeah. So in this case, we use that same concept to allow for donations to come in over time. So I don't know what else I could...
No, that's fine. I think, good, so we encourage the support for the project. It's a town meeting has voted it, and anything anybody can do to move it along would be, I know would be most appreciated. So one of the ways we can help is to waive the permit fees for the high school field project, and that's the purpose of our next vote, so I entertain a motion.
I make a motion to waive the permit fees for the high school fields project.
I'll second that.
And that's consistent, by the way, just for the public with all municipal projects.
Right.
We don't charge ourselves.
Okay. Thank you for that comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
The -- we have a regulatory agreement regarding a covenant at 80 Beale Street. Is there anything you need to add to that? We've had the document.
It's really a cleanup. I know Betty's been working with counsel on this, I refer to her.
It's a cleanup of an agreement you signed a couple of weeks ago. The -- one of the attorneys had neglected to put in a couple of minor changes. I sent them to our real estate counsel. She reviewed them and said they were fine, so...
Are they marked in here?
I think we sent you the electronic markup. This is the clean copy.
Okay.
Because we've seen how many versions of this.
Yeah, okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we sign the regulatory agreement and declaration of restricted covenant at 80 Beale Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Irma, since you're in the South Shore Conservatory...
Yippee!
You get to do this one.
Yes, yes. Great, and summer's coming for Evening Under the Stars, so everybody check out the schedule. Make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages liquor license to the South Shore Conservatory of Music in care of William Arvenides for the Summer Spotlight Concert Series at the South Shore Conservatory of Music from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM on each of the following days, June 21st, 28th, July 5th, 6th, 12th, 13th, 20th, and 27th, 2013.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, everybody's going to have a good time. That's the -- okay. We're running a little late, about a half an hour, and the clock is running on an attorney, so I want to make sure that we...
Let's get this in.
But I just have -- I normally would like to go around Robin on the -- this, and I'll ask us if you just keep your comments briefly on Selectman's reports, but a couple of things I'd like to mention. In this week's Hingham Journal, there was a very complimentary article on Roger Brody and his services at -- to the Hingham Middle School, oh, these many years. So we add our congratulations to Roger for a long and happy retirement, and he doesn't have to climb on the roof anymore to shovel it off. Thank God for that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, on that note, I was going to include this in my report, but I'll be real brief. When you mentioned the roof, I think it's worthwhile mentioning to the folks at home. If you'd be really interested in seeing a great send-off, if you go on YouTube and you type in Roger Brody flash mob, I believe the words are you have to type in, you'll see an enormously touching video of their send-off to him. What they did is lured him up on the roof to look at something.
Did they really?
And when he got there, the entire school was assembled below in the parking lot, and they serenaded him with a goodbye.
Very nice.
Very nice.
They actually made the evening news tonight.
Oh, it did make the evening news. It was terrific.
Oh, good, good.
I heard they were in town, so that's good.
And it's a very moving piece, so I'd encourage everybody to take a look at it. And it celebrates a man's career, a wonderful man's career.
Good. Okay, let me just go through some highlights. We haven't met in a while, but just, I want to thank General Wegman, who gave a stirring speech at Memorial Day, those of you who were there. This was a man who had notes, but got from behind the podium and was just very, I think, inspirational for the day. Followed, just shortly before that, the rededication of G.A.R. Hall, and I thank that committee for all the work they did. On -- we had a Selectman's Golf Tournament on June 3rd. I did not participate in order to keep the golf course moving. But I have to tell you, I got a very complimentary note in gratification from the Fourth of July Committee, particularly Carrie and Jim Murphy, who led the effort in fundraising, and they raised a considerable amount of money for the Fourth of July Parade, so I thank them for their efforts. The -- Irma and I and Paul, we've tried our schedules to get to the two Police Academy graduations. I think they're 43rd and 44th. Is that -- that's right? So this is a -- just a program that is a tribute to Chief Carlson and others who have made it happen. And the Sunday, we had a Fireman's Breakfast, which got us all up at 8:00 in the morning on a Sunday, and that's a...
I'll bear for that.
Yeah, that was always good. And of course, the most important event of the year for our students and children, the graduation in June, on June 1st, for so many, and I attended a number of parties, which just add to the day, so it was a great event. Does anybody have anything quickly they'd like to...
Yeah, and I have two things after.
Hi, folks. Monday, the Planning Board had a meeting, and we had set the room up for 100 people, and there were about five there, which was kind of too bad, because the Planning Board is undertaking to update the master plan. And the master plan serves as the basis for guidance on a lot of decisions that the permitting boards make in the future. So I'd encourage all of you who are out there to attend these upcoming meetings. There's going to be a series of them. And, you know, put in your two cents as to where you think things should be going, and, you know, it's one thing to come up to one of us and say, hey, you know, there's too much growth in the town. Well, here's an opportunity to speak to the people who make those decisions and present your perspective. I'm going to put a card down. I'm told this little white table here shows it, but there's an opportunity to take a survey, I think.
Yes, it's an online survey. We're using a website called surveymonkey.com, which is a very easy-to-use survey. All the data comes back to us, and we encourage everybody to, you know, go online and, if they can, and complete the survey.
All right.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Paul. It's a good reminder. Irma?
Two quick things.
Yeah?
Tuesday night, I attended the Girl Scout Awards Night. And first, I want to congratulate Vicki Chipman and her committee for a wonderful, well-done event. And Garrett Bradley was there, representatives for -- Bob Hedlund were there, and six girls got their gold award, and the gold award is the highest award a Girl Scout can get. And to congratulate the six young women, Mia Bornstein, Ariana Chipman, Emma Holland, Alison McDermott, Meredith Schering, and Eliza Snow, and their projects were very impressive. Also, and I'm sorry the chief left, Jerry Duff was given an award in recognition of all of her years of scouting. She has done work with both the boys and the Girl Scouts. And my second item, by now, hopefully, everybody knows that Axel, our canine, has had surgery and is in recovery, and for all of you that have pets, you know that veterinary services are, how shall we say, not cheap. These expenses are not covered by the town, and the most recent Police Academy graduating class is setting up a fundraiser, and you can buy, for $4 or more, if you wish, a bracelet that has Axel's name on it and a couple other things. They're also selling T-shirts. The supply is very low right now. You can buy them at the police station, and at some point, you're going to be able to buy them at the library. They'll be setting up a table for a day. There'll be plenty of publicity. Talked to Jennifer today, and she's been putting up posters all over town. You can also write a check, and if you so desire, the check should be made out to the Hingham Police Department K-9 Unit. You can drop them off at the Police Department, or with Eileen McCracken or a town clerk, or I'm sure if you put them in the town hall mailbox, they'll get to the right place. So, and the bracelets are pretty cool.
They are.
Because I have one, and the T-shirts, I've not seen them, but the way they were described to me, they're pretty cool, too.
Yeah, they are.
So please help.
That's good. Thank you for that. One last item of information. Yesterday, the State Department of Transportation paid a visit to the Sons of Italy, where a meeting was held to hear from a number of citizens of the town concerning the Summer Street Corridor and the prospective issues that they are going to address. We hope to have in our hands, within the next week to 10 days, a summary report from their representative that describes the issues that they have put forth as needing solutions. And it's an extensive list, so I'll say no more than that until we get the report, and you'll hear more of that, but that's moving forward. And lastly, a conflict with Michael Salerno presented him from being here tonight, but the Sewer Commission-led study on our sewer policy has been progressing, and we hope to have that in the -- in our report next week's meeting, because I know many of you are interested in that. So the last piece of matter we have to discuss is to adjourn for an executive session for purposes of discussing strategy with respect to potential litigation, because discussion in open session may be detrimental to the negotiating position of the town. We will not return. I'll entertain such a motion, and then I will poll the vote.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Ms. Lauter?
Aye.
Mr. Abuffo?
Aye.
We thank you all very much. Stay dry tonight. Safe home.